It's seven o'clock and I'm going to call over the East Ocean Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 15, 2021. We always start with a pledge allegiance flag. We live in the United States of America, in this republic which stands on a nation under God and without evil, without evil and sorrow.
Please remain standing for a moment. We're going to offer a moment of silence to our first responders, but in particular, we're going to keep in mind our Public Works Department. One of our gentlemen suffered an injury today, not life-threatening, but a grave injury, and we just hope that you'll consider giving your thoughts. Thank you very much.
We're going to announce the meeting will be on its livestream on YouTube. Is anybody else reporting the meeting? Thank you. I'm going to go out of order tonight. As Chair, I have the privilege to do that. The first thing I want to do is let you all know that this evening is Mr. Smith's last Board of Supervisors meeting after 52 years. I want you all to recognize Rick's 52 years. Rick started as a laborer in our Public Works Department when he was 72-years-old, so that's pretty amazing. And tomorrow, we will be, later on in today's meeting, we'll be announcing that we're going to make it officially Rick Smith Day. We'll recognize that every year. I'd also like to introduce, for those of you who have not met, Eric Davis. Eric is, will be our, taking notice, our new Township Manager, comes to us from East Ocean, West Ocean Township. So he's a bordering township and is familiar with a lot of our issues and has dealt with Township Management for a long time. We're real excited to have Eric with us now and starting officially. And to his left is Dave Ware. Dave is our new Director of Finance. Some of you have met Dave already. He's been here a little bit longer. So we're really excited about our new management team going forward. And of course, we'll miss Rick. Still, and we'll be having some activities tomorrow for Rick's last day. Believe me, we'll be celebrating Rick's long tenure here at the Township. So as I said, I'm going to take things out of order because you obviously are all not here to watch us approve a stormwater management agreement for home or approve an in-law suite. So the way this is going to work, first of all, I know this is a contentious issue, and I'm going to ask everybody to please observe, respect, decorum, and let's just try to practice some kindness, okay? I don't want to have people interrupting people when they're talking. Let's hear people out. Some ground rules. I'm going to make a motion, parliamentary procedure, I'll make a motion. There will be two motions for two separate resolutions. We're going to make a motion for one of those resolutions. I'm going to open it up then for comment by board members, and then I'm going to open it up to comments by the Hicks family and their representatives. And then I'm going to open it up to citizens and taxpayers of East Ocean Township. If we have enough time, and there are non-residents here that would like to comment, if we have time, I'll open it up to non-residents, and they're, they'll be limited to a one-minute comment period. If you're going to comment publicly, because we're recording, we need to have your comments from the podium. So you'll come up, give us your name and address, and then proceed with your comments. Everyone good with that? We will start with the... I'm going to do that later. Yeah, I'm going to go straight to the, straight to the meeting. Although, let me just say in the Chairman's report, we did meet an executive session on June 14, jointly with municipal authority to discuss a legal matter with regard to our sewer system. The Board met an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss a legal matter pertaining to the Paley Pike Trail. The hearing for the Pipeline Awareness Study ordinance, which we've been discussing for a while, will be, we're going to discuss that at our July 6 meeting. And the US Army Corps of Engineers is soliciting comment on the postponed Milltown Dam work. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Public notice was sent out and can be found on the website under Services, then Public Notice. So thank you, Miss Allen, decided to do the Chairman's report. In 2016, the Board adopted the Paley Pike Master Plan, recommended a multimodal trail to be constructed along Paley Pike. The Board subsequently obtained bond financing to fund the engineering and right-of-way acquisition for the trail with the goal that the construction cost of the trail would be funded by grants. To date, we have completed segments C, D, E, F, and G of the trail, and Segment A is currently under construction. We're finalizing the engineering for Segment B, which runs from Reservoir Road to Ellis Lane. In September of last year, we reached out to the owners of the four properties that would be impacted by the trail. Unfortunately, in spite of the Township's efforts, we've not been able to acquire the necessary property interest from the owners of two of the parcels. Mr. William Hicks, who owns one parcel, and Mr. Phillips Hicks and Mr. Peter Hicks, who own the other parcel. It's unfortunate, however, we believe that the completion of the Paley Pike Trail is in the best interest of the Township as a whole. Therefore, I'm going to make the first motion, and I am going to move that the Board adopt Resolution Number 2021-201 to authorize the condemnation of the permanent and temporary easement across Peter and Philip Hicks', I'm sorry, across Williams' land, William Hicks' land. That parcel being Chester County Tax Met Parcel Number 53-3-1.8. So now we're going to have Board comment first, and then William Hicks or representatives of William Hicks.
First, then second to the motion.
I'm sorry, I need a second to the motion.
And I will second that motion.
Thanks. And now open for Board discussion. Any discussion? No.
I'll go first then.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to take a moment, and just indulge me, I'm going to read Section 1, Article, Article 1 of the Pennsylvania Constitution. In our rights of mankind, all men are born equally free and independent and have certain inherent but indefensible rights, among which are those of enjoying and acquiring, possessing and protecting property and reputation, and of pursuing their own happiness. And we are sworn to uphold that constitution. And the matter that is before us, the Paley Pike Trail at this time is over budget. It was proposed at the beginning, we would spend $2.4 million of Township funding. At this point, we are in $2,524, excuse me, 200, I'm sorry, $2,524,631. At this point, the proposed projected completion amount is $3,038,500, which is over budget by $514,220. These are such big numbers. In order to move forward, we have to spend more money for the Township funding because there's a lot of, there are a lot of other costs that are still considered soft costs that we cannot get back grants. My understanding is we're a million under budget with grants because we've, they've come in, I guess, the grant monies have come in and they've been able to be under budget. So the Township costs are still remaining the same or more. I wish that we could come to a resolution with the Hicks families that would be more amenable to them. I would propose either stopping the trail where it is and considering a different direction. And I don't know if we've got to the point of no return on that, but I do have a proposed plan that would take us through the corporate park and adjacent to William Hicks' property and CTBI, and back through the wetlands, and up through... Sorry, I'm trying to sit back.
Marty, is your mic on? Excuse me.
No.
None of the mics on.
No. And it would take us up to Ocean Parkway. We would only have to construct a small portion of that part of the trail if we were to go that direction. Engineering has already been done on Segment B. So there would be monies that would be unfortunately lost. There have been, there have been easements that have been acquired, and we will not get that money back if that was the case. And we would have to go to a number of businesses to try to acquire their, their easement. So it's, like I said, it's possibly too late to do that, but I do have a plan. I wish that it could be considered so that we could work something out so that the beauty of the farm can be maintained and left as it is. I have concerns because of the requirement. In order to get the permit, we have to have an archaeological dig that is performed on the property, and if there are artifacts of historical importance, we'll have to go to potentially another phase of an additional archaeological dig, which will cost us more money. But again, it's a soft cost that the Township would have to put out. And so I think there are a lot of reasons why we should stop and take a few minutes to consider another option. So at this time, I am not in a position to say where I stand at this point, but I wish we could find another way to do this.
Thank you, Michelle.
Any other board member comments?
Mr. Chairman, may I show my map?
Yeah.
And on this map, only the orange would be area that would need to be constructed. The green is the cabin that's already in place. Yellow is... The other side?
Am I updated?
Yes.
Thank you. I will be as brief as I can. I ran opposed to the trail. I believe the trail is very pretty, but it's not something we need. We have trails in the park already. What upsets me about the trail is the $9.3 million price tag. There is $3 million of East Ocean money, your money and my money in there, and that's money we need for a good many other items. The West Ocean sewer treatment plant needs about $1.5 million. We need about $800,000 to fix the sewer pipes in Urshie Mill Estates, and we need a couple hundred thousand to fix up the mill pond situation, at least that much. We won't have it. We will have to borrow it or raise taxes. So I opposed the project when I ran. I oppose the project right now, and I will continue to oppose the project. I also, I'm probably, I'm on the left side from here, but you see me on your right, and I am pretty conservative when it comes to things like eminent domain. I believe that it's proper in very few situations, building of a hospital, a school, maybe an important road. I don't see it being necessary when you are talking about what is a very nice wide pavement. I don't think we need that, and I certainly don't support eminent domain being used in this instance.
All right. I don't think there are any more word comments. So at this point, do we have any comments from William Hicks or William Hicks' representatives? The motion is for that particular parcel.
Mr. Chairman, my name is David Roman. I represent the Hick's. I'm from the firm of Hi-Schwarz. As a matter of preference, I would like the Hicks to speak first, and I'll speak last. As I understand what the President said, you want the Hicks family to speak first. Would you follow? Have I had a public comment? If I understand that correctly?
I would be ambivalent. You can speak first, or the family speaks first, whichever. I said, I think I said the family or representative.
Thank you. I'm going to have the family speak first, and I'm going to follow, I'm going to speak last on their behalf. Thanks, David. William?
This has upset me terribly much. For all the years I've lived here, and I just don't know how to, whatever. I'm going to try to agree this month. Why didn't the Township talk to us before they spent all the money in hundreds of thousands of dollars making engineering plans for our property? I have asked to see the survey for the trail, and the responses, but I've never received anything about a survey done during this trail. And as leaders, you are here to protect our rights, not take them away. My objection to it is, why don't you make it the trails where they'll service the majority of the people? To get to these, this trail, you either have to park at the Y or at the park. You need to drive to this access, access the trail. Park at the park or the Y. Why don't you start the trails at the neighborhoods where there's 5,000 people? Marydale, Penoke, Bowtree, Grand Oak. How do they get to the trail? They have to drive. They have to drive to the other end of the Townships. How many people are currently using the trail? How many on the Board have used it? Have you gone to lunch? Have you gone to the park from here? One person. And how many people have voted for this in the Township? How many people voted? There's no vote taken. How many on the Board have used it? Have you gone to lunch? Have you gone to the park from here? One person. And how many people have voted for this in the Township? How many people voted? There's no vote taken. I know. Wouldn't they put it on ballot so we can all vote on this? And once this trail is done, and I see already, East Ocean's under like $3 million worth of monies, that once, who has the cost of what it's going to take for the next one year or each year? What's the cost? Has anybody ever projected any of that? Has anybody projected that? Hello? I'm asking.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
Well, that's what I'm asking. We don't get any answers.
The latest storm, which is our primary cost, it was about $850 to maintain the trail, the existing trail during a snowstorm, for a snowstorm.
I ask for silence while we have...
I'm asking what the maintenance cost for taking care of the trail is?
They'll be de minimis. Once the trail is in, I mean, what's the cost of maintaining the roads in your home? We pave those roads every 17 years. We're talking about a pedestrian bicycle trail here with some landscaping and some fences. So maintenance is de minimis going forward on the trail.
You're not going to mow the lawns?
We currently mow the lawns.
And how? That's what I'm asking.
Well, we currently do it anyhow. So some cost actually less mowing because of the trail covering the grass surface. So it's, it's not an added cost.
If there's no trail, there's no cost.
Well, we have to mow the grass where the trail exists.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. Well, that's de minimis. That's the thing.
So what is the, say it's completed, what have you projected for maintenance?
If the property owner does not mow the trail, the Township will mow it. We have not broken the, we cut a lot of grass every, every once a week. The mowing the grass beside the trail is, like as David said, is not that big of a deal.
Lot holds sink holds.
Yeah.
Doesn't anybody have any projection of what it's going to cost? Isn't there anybody that can figure this out?
What we do know at this point in time, Mr. Hicks, is that the trail is not going to generate the need for another employee. We do know that amongst Public Works. We do know that. That was discussed, whether or not we would need additional employees in Public Works and to grow the government relative to further staff. Insurance is covered broadly under our policy irrespective of whether the trail is there or not for liability.
Excuse me. We will have a chance. Thank you. Please.
I'm not going to permit people shouting out from the audience here, but we're going to ask you to leave the meeting if you shout out from the audience. Mr. Hicks has the podium right now.
So, Mr. Hicks, there has been that kind of discussion about the ability of Public Works to accommodate the maintenance as we go forward. Yes, long-term, there's potential for a need to patch trails. We've seen them. We've seen on the Chester Valley Trail. You've seen on the Scooball River Trail. And you see it in other locations where there were paved trails that can put in ADA, accessibility trails. Long-term repaving because it does not have the structural pressures on it from large vehicles, unless there is serious heave and frost over a long extended period of time, the trails are going to remain pretty substantial and in place for more than 15, 17 years. Will there be patches in locations where there's maybe a drainage issue shows up? Sure, we'll have to do work on that. Long-term, a repaving of the project, it will probably come in cycles. And I don't recall whether we put any dollars in the capital reserve fund and asset depreciation at this point in time or not yet, but they are, in the long-term, relative to this linear multimodal trail, not significant in the context comparative to a regular roadway. Although, the way they've been constructed, they can accommodate vehicles because of the way the subbase, et cetera. And then we're required to do that as part of the grants and the process that end up required for the way these trails are constructed. So short-term operational Public Works, Mark Miller, who's Director of Public Works, has assured us that the existing staff can conduct that work without a need for additional employees. They also hire employees, summer employees, part-time, seasonal, college students and the like, and they do a lot of our mowing as well. But as far as operational repairs and the maintenance schedule, winter maintenance, they've indicated that they can manage that. And Mr. Miller would be here tonight, but in fact, it was his son, Mark Miller, who sustained a serious injury today, so he is not here. But he would probably be able to give comment to that one, Mr. Hicks. But and I'm sharing this in some generalities. I don't have a spreadsheet in front of me. Rick mentioned that at one expense that we had during the winter snowstorm of what it caused to clear that trail off. So that's at least some background in response to that that I would hear.
There's no projected extra?
Not at, not at this point in time. We will probably, we recently just had a long-term budget planning session earlier this month, looking at our long-term projections of our general fund and the performance of it. And we talked about capital reserve funding, but we did not bring that in. And that would be a discussion as to what the depreciated value is. For instance, we do not depreciate as a wasting asset our roads. We've discussed things like that, as to whether or not that is a viable piece of infrastructure to actually put capital dollars away. And the cost of doing that is not effective when you've got an effective road maintenance plan for resurfacing on a 15, 17, 20-year cycle. And so, in that context, that's one piece of infrastructure we have not reserved for, and nor have any other municipalities that I'm aware of amongst the 73 in Chester County as an example of infrastructure maintenance and long-term costs. as an example of infrastructure maintenance and long-term costs.
And just in closing, my grandfather, my father, and I now have owned that property for over 100 years. We've tried to maintain it and look like a farm. I'm sure a lot of you people have moved here, but enjoying the country look. We are trying to keep that. And when you start putting stripes across the driveway and stop signs and all this, and then we have concerns for horses. We'll speak about that later. I just feel that we're trying to maintain that. And in having done that, so a lot of our time has taken to do that, to keep it up and make it look. And people always say, come by and see, there's the next one. And they see that. And now it's going to just be disrupted with what looks like Philadelphia. I mean, with all this times. So that's, and then, and I just wanted to ask one thing. How many times has eminent domain been done here at East Ocean? Under the years I've been on the board, not once.
We did it one time. Well, we did it recently for a piece of ground in the middle of the intersection up here. They couldn't find, figure out who owned it. But we also did it back in the 70s where A S U R I.
They're necessary, yes. For all public use.
Yeah, yeah. The trail has to be in public use in order for us to use eminent domain. Yes.
What I'm saying is that a sore line is important.
Yes, it is. Yes, I agree. Yes, it is.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to, you know, eminent domain is a very serious thing. And here, if that's, you know, 200-year history or 300-year history of this township, that's the only two instances?
To my knowledge, yes. I can always speak for last 52.
Or the last 75 remaining. Okay? So I'm just saying is what my father, and I didn't choose to move here. I lived here all my life. My father has lived here, and he's buried right over here. I will be buried there also. My grandfather's buried over there. We've lived here all our lives. We've tried to maintain. My father's a supervisor for 45 years, and he loved this township. And I, I, I'm speaking for my father. He would actually be turning over in his grave to see this happening today. And it's just, it's a pity that people come and they want to chase, bring the city to the country. This is just obscene. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hicks. I'm here in Salt. The Hicks family feel, we feel the township and their representatives have knocked the mountains with us. We feel the pictures given to us of the trail are deceptive. It took Phil asking or sometimes yelling multiple times about how the grading was going to work to get more direct answers. He realized from the beginning what was proposed did not work. The township made it sound like they were just shaving a little piece of the property for the trail. But with Phil's persistence, we found out that's not accurate. Our first reason for not wanting the trail on our property is solely due to the liability and concerns for everyone's safety. Our driveway is very hard to pull in and out of. Paley Pike is a fast-paced road. Having an intersection at the driveway makes it even more difficult to turn in and out of the farm. With the trail, we now have to watch for cars, joggers, bikers, walkers, et cetera. We are also very concerned for the safety of the horses. Horses are an attractive nuisance, as our insurance company puts it. No matter what signs we put up, people will do what they want. If they feed these horses, it could cause health problems, which will incur death to people, possibly even death to the horse. There's no guarantee that fences will keep people from petting horses or going into the fields. Who's responsible for this? This is just another liability put on my family. Why can't the trail go across the street connecting to the already existing walking trail at East High School? Why did East High School have the right to say no, but we were never asked? It would be safer for kids to have the trail on that side of the road. It would be safer for the kids to have a walking with the lights and everything across Paley Pike. I watched the kids like run, 10, 15 kids run across Paley Pike after school. It's so dangerous. And if we had a safer way for them to cross, that would be great. Are there other options? Can we put them closer to the neighborhoods? I love your map. I mean, that's a great idea. I would love, I would just love other options to be explored. We just hope that you'll take into consideration our concerns. We're not trying to be difficult. We are worried. We're worried for the animals. We're worried for the people. And I don't want the farm to change. I grew up in West Chester. We were neighbors. Married the boy next door, and I don't want it to change. But I know life changes. I get that. I understand that. But this is a want, not a need. Thank you.
Phil thinks, and also would appear, Bill's old, you know? Nate, Bill and, they had covered it pretty much. But the other thing is, why, I really didn't like the tactics that your representatives came out to, to us. They come out and said, well, you know, this trail is all this and that, and shows pictures, which were very deceptive. Because that's why I say Mark Gordon doesn't know what he's doing. And I said, how are you going to make that ADA compliant? Oh, because they showed the picture, didn't show how much of a cut they were going to take out. They were going to take a three-foot cut. And I said, Gordon, we're going to have a bank here. Well, the engineer was supposed to be there. It was so convenient not to be. Finally got him on the phone. Well, now they're going to go 30 feet back to make the slope down to the trail, which is 10 feet in from the fence that's there. I said, now you're going 30 feet back? Now it's not going to be taking ground. It's just going to be worked on. And these other, I talked to a couple of the other people that they got the ground from. And it was like, well, if you don't give us the ground, we're going to take it. And here's the money, by the way. So you weighed the money in front of them. Well, they signed it over. Why wouldn't you? The other thing I'd like to say is that it's in my front yard. I consider that my front yard. And I try to maintain the place and make it look good. And this is not going to make it look good from my perspective. And I worry about the horses. Now, the comment was, oh, we're going to put two fences up. Now, who's going to maintain this? He said, oh, that's negligible. Crap. It's not negligible. You put two fences up, who's going to maintain in that? Mark come out to me, I was out there dragging the matters, and we discussed that a little bit. He's not too happy about this. If you ask that maintained in the meantime, ask my wife about the ice in the park. That's all I have to say. We just had Linda Hicks last. Okay, thank you. I actually would like to hear from the horse, the owner of the horse.
Good evening. Linda Hicks, Airport Road. A lot of the things that I'm going to say have already been said, but I guess they bear repeating. As you can imagine, thinking about this trail has taken up our family's time as well as our sleep. And many sleepless nights. And that's how this letter came about, because I couldn't sleep. Given the amount of time though I've had to think about the trail and learning all about the impact of the trail on our property has made me realize and concerns. So since we do not know where West Ocean plans to start their trail, why not wait to find out so that a smoother, less expensive, and more direct connection can be made? You wouldn't have to pay a million dollars for a bridge. And the township wouldn't have, wouldn't have to pay for the state archeological date at the cost of $17,400. I think it would be prudent to examine the existing trail and tally the number of users. Ask them about their experiences using this trail. I have found that trying to use this trail in the late afternoon in the winter is not convenient as the sun is in your eyes and you can't see very well across exits and entrances safely. I've also found that you need to stop frequently. Walkers as well as bike riders like to keep going in order to keep the heart rate up. I've witnessed both walkers and bike riders walking and riding along Paley Pike next to the trail, apparently to avoid the need to stop at the stop sign that's on the trail. I've also witnessed users not stopping at the stop signs when they should be. I've also witnessed users in the park not using the button to stop the traffic to cross Paley Pike safely. Is that fair to drivers who are ultimately responsible? Are users concerned about the traffic noise and carbon dioxide? It appears to me that more people frequent the park trails to avoid these things and to enjoy nature, as I have many, many times. On our farm, we have horses called, as you learned earlier, attractive nuisances by the insurance company. This creates many concerns that could ultimately lead to loss of business for the horse farm manager. This exposure places even more of a burden upon us. Don will address this issue. Will clients decide that having to negotiate traffic as well as trail users at the end of the driveway, too much to deal with, and decide to stop taking riding lessons, take their horse elsewhere? If a trail user is injured due to a collision with a vehicle coming or leaving the farm, the vehicle operator is responsible. Will this negatively impact the horse business? As you can see, this trail has revealed many scenarios that are worrisome and not welcome. Thank you for your time.
Who's speaking?
My name is Don Silver Valley. I own the horse farm. I've been there.
You own the horse farm? Is it the East Ocean Township? Oh, you're okay. You're in the market.
I am now a rich farm. So Linda just covered a lot of my concerns. So, the main one is the safety of the horses, basically. Putting a trail of allowing people to walk, cross, be in front of, they can throw anything into the field at any time that could be of the danger to the horses. That be it of any food, trash, or anything that could cause any harm to the horses. They're not going to know that it could or not could. They're not going to care. Some people would want to socialize with the horses and think it's cute to pet horses because a lot of people do. It's not cute because it brings them to the fence. It causes fights amongst the fencing. It also will cause damage to the fencing, and then we have to fix that. It causes injury to the horses, which who's going to pay for that? The owners of the horses. So it just leaves a lot of extra liability. That I as the business owner that takes care of a lot of people's horses, it adds a lot of stress. And it's extra concern that my clients just don't, I've been there for 20, over 23 years now. It's family to me. The Hicks is our family to me. The situation just stinks. It's a poor thing right now. And I think that's the main part, is the safety of the horses. But worrying about the business and do I have to worry about my clients leaving? A lot of my clients are here right now. I would hope not. No matter what happens, I will do the best by my business and make the best out of a bad situation. But yeah, they would have to worry about what's already heavy traffic becoming heavier. What's already hard enough to get in and out of the driveway, harder. Pulling in and out with the big trailers are going to be harder. So putting the walking trail in is not going to make anything easier. It's going to make it harder from the horse business's stance. So, from how rich farm I'm myself, we both know.
I ask that the members speak first, because frankly, I couldn't say it better than they do. I am a solicitor in many townships in four counties. I do what Chris McCamp does. I'm a client of mine, I think they're very good. And I represent clients like yourselves who have to make tough decisions from time to time. Frankly, 40 years I've been doing this, I've been domain for a trail, has never been on my agenda in any of my meetings. You can see the emotional impact this is having on the Hicks family. It's having an impact on the horse farm. It's having an impact on your family. You saw a road being up here, and it has impacted his health. That will remain not enough. It's no lie that Linda did fall on poorly maintained parking lots of this township. And her recovery is not easy. That's taken a toll. And Philip, well, he's not in the best of health. Won't disclose anything, but frankly, he didn't need this. And they hired me to try to resolve it. Yes, you gave us the first draft of agreements November of 2020. In the middle of COVID. We met for the first time in March of 2021. And Phil and I asked one question, show us my stakes to the trail. It took me three meetings over six months of March, over four, three and a half months, traveling 95 miles each time because I'm COVID and got it for sure, to get in. And it's right now. And ironically, as I was leaving the driveway today, there were horses to my right grazing on what would be the trail. And ironically, on my left, five of them. Do you really want to turn this into a penny store? Not only is it sensitive because it's an act of worship, it's a sense of environmental. It has wetlands. It has potential, five terms. You have to do an archaeological date. You have time to consider an alternative that will have less of an impact on the environment, less of an impact on potential archaeological resources, and less of a human impact on the exit. Two impacts to consider. We were advised for the first time about four weeks ago, the construction period will be one year. One year? Really? Now, every time workers go on site, the horses have to go into the stage, incurring a dextro hay and straw costs. May seem de minimis to you, but it's not de minimis to the agriculturalists. 12 months of construction. We asked for sound barriers to block it, like Sanoco did. It was a resounding no. How are you going to protect the horse farm for the 12 months of construction? We haven't figured that out yet. Then, of course, is there impact of the trail and the attractive nuisance? I don't need to read too... I don't need to replay, to basically replay what's been told. I would urge you to go look at the impact if you haven't for yourselves, to go see even tonight, the horses grazing in that field. I have photographs for any board member that would like to see what was happening about fifteen, twenty minutes before I arrived here tonight, and implore upon you to take your time. You have more time. This grant cycle's not going away. My municipalities are applying for grants, and they're only getting more plentiful. The Biden administration is in, and Wolf has given out money like candy. For any public infrastructure project, you have at least the next three years to apply for this grant. Take your time, live with the Hicks family, and try to avoid this particular location. Thank you.
We have taken roughly forty-five minutes of that, scheduled to be on the agenda for twenty minutes, which was never really very practical, and I understand that. I'm going to open this up to comments from the public. I'm going to ask you to please not be redundant. If what was already said has been said, we really don't need you to say it again. If you have any new points to make, please step to the microphone, and please try to be brief and concise with your comments. Best way to do that is to queue up along this wall over here and come up and introduce yourself at the podium. Thank you.
Just a note, there are a number of chairs in the front, so if anybody would like to come in, we have probably about seven or eight chairs that are in on here.
Ma'am, hi, my name is Brenda Iserson. I am a twenty-three-year resident of East Ocean. Today I see the sign respecting the past, serving the president, preparing for the future. I have found this whole discussion to be an outrage. People have gotten things carried away. We will have tax increases anyway, sir, but that goes with saying. But what I am really, really, obviously mad about is that the whole story is not being told here. I'd like to know some questions. One, did the Hicks sell their property, part of it subdivided into a builder? Two, has this had an accessory for two thousand and five to have their taxes reduced? Three, is this a business plan where if this property is sold, it will have business there? Duty shops, constructions, commercial properties? And is this motivation financial? Yes, what are we looking for? At six feet, six feet of swar, and the children have to cut across pally pipe. People talk about their children being safe? What is more safer than having a sidewalk for them to walk on? And the horses? Yes, I respect your right to have the horses, but six feet is not going to have anything when we have the chance of a child going into the street and getting hurt. Now, the Hicks family, I am sorry that you were born for this, but how many acres do you have that we cannot have a six-foot patch where the children said they don't have to walk on the thing? I am so furious. We're not talking acres, we're talking six feet. No, I'm not sitting down because I'm not done with this. All right, I am so upset over this because the whole story is being told, because people have been saying such negative things. We live in one of the most wonderful communities, townships, that there are out there, and we're wealthy, we have the tax dollars. We're not asking to steal these people's land, we're asking for a small swath of it.
I talked earlier about we're going to have the forum.
Everybody has their moment, please, and we're going to respect them all, be respectful of what your position may be. Let's conduct ourselves the way we are in East Ocean, civilly and responsibly, please.
Hi, my name is Melanie McHenry. I do not live in this township.
Melanie, Melanie, you want to sit down and...
And wait until the residents who live here...
Any other residents that want to come to the podium? Just stay right where you are.
Actually, your consideration, though, we want to hear from our residents within the township.
Any other residents who would like to make a comment?
Well, I would.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Joe Reed. My wife and I moved here two years and one day ago. We chose this area from New Jersey for retirement, one, because of its beauty, two, because of the reputation of the stability of the government in Chester County. We've been here two years and a day, and I see that the government, the local government, is coming in and taking a man's property. That was an issue two hundred years ago, that the British took the residents' property. They didn't call it eminent domain, the government just took your property. That's exactly what's happening here, and I'm kind of disappointed. I come from New Jersey. New Jersey's, everything you've ever heard about in Jersey's been right. And turns out, I moved into the same situation, that you're coming in and saying, well, we need this land for people to walk on. I've only lived here two years and a day. I have no right to come in here and disrupt what these people have lived here for generations. But I've not seen anybody walking on this trail, not one. I pass it every Sunday, every sunny morning, we go to DK Dine, and I've not seen anyone on that trail. So I question, why are you doing this? I mean, why are you taking someone's property that's been in one case the Hicks for generations, and you're taking it for a trail? It's one, which I never thought I would, but someone mentioned, it's one on the opposite side of the street of a school. Why would you do that? Why wouldn't you want that trail to be on the same side of the street where there's a school? That doesn't make sense, then. And again, I come from New Jersey. I don't understand, you're over budget already, I question, I'm a simple salesman, but I question the accuracy of your forecasted maintenance on the street. That's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars over a couple of years. Of cutting the grass, that's a natural, that's not going to be the problem. You're going to have damage to that roadway, and once you start repairing it, and you start getting frost, and then it starts freezing, and it starts going downhill. I think it's fine stuff. I just, as a new resident here, I think you made a good mistake. Thank you.
I'm Terri Relic, and I'm Terri Relic. I'm just speaking for the horse owners. I'm one of them. Who do we sue when one of a horse dies from people you, from people feeding them? Is there going to be cameras up, or maybe cameras down, or are we going to go after the township?
I'd like to address the, I'd like to address the horse question. I don't know if the horse people in the room are familiar with the Empress Arabian Farm in Venetia, Pennsylvania, outside of Pittsburgh. It's one of the premier Arabian breeding and sales farms in the country. Running adjacent to that for three miles is the Montour Trail and the Arood Trail. Perfect example, and you can go on the internet and look, and just Google Empress Arabian Farms. You see pictures of bicycles along the fenceway with the horses in the field, signage along the fence. People who use these trails aren't interested in killing horses, or even feeding horses, or even distracting horses. This, this trail, I would encourage you to look at the Empress Arabian, that trails in horses, and trails in farms, and trails in residential properties exist cooperatively and peacefully for ages, and the idea that people on cycles, of people jogging, or people walking on a trail are interested in harming horses, I just, I don't see the logic.
No one's going to do it on purpose. People are well-meaning, they love to give horses carrots. My horse will flounder if he has too much. Dog's always putting him on a diet. It's just, it's just the nature. Horses paw, once they start getting fed, they paw the fence, they get their leg stuck, they can break a leg, they can wound themselves. You can't heal a horse from a broken leg. Just the nature. Kids are going to be riding by, scooters are going to be yelling. Horses dart in all directions, they bolt, it's sloping, there's potholes in the yards, someone's going to break a leg. Just the nature of the horses.
When you say on the scooters, what did you mean?
Scooters, bikes, you know, the little scooters.
Okay.
Yeah, activity.
Everyone understands this.
Horses are skittish animals. They bolt, and the whole herd follows, and they all will bolt, and somebody will get hurt, one of the horses will get hurt. It's just a fact. No one's going to do it on purpose, people are well-meaning, they think it's great to feed the horses, throw stuff over the fence, it's going to cause a problem. My horse will beg until you give him a treat, and he will hurt himself. He'll get caught on the fence, that's just what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri.
My name is Fred Piozza, I'm a lawyer in East County Township, so I used to be a lawyer. I'm supposed to be retired, I'm an architect, a developer, and I'm also an ex-supervisory township. I think this is turned around and opposite. You should be having all these things in front, then have your food, you have your property, then your engineering. You don't do all your engineering, and you lose your budget, now you have to take away from somebody else's stuff to do this. One thing is, there's need, and one, I think somebody repeated that, but I don't see the need, I'm missing something. Usually all this stuff is in engineering and everything like that, but first, I want to thank everybody for participation, I do appreciate what you do with that stuff. Really is, these get people thinking a lot of time and energy, it takes like two bucks an hour to do it. But anyway, I do want to thank you for being, representing us, but I would really seriously think overlook some major, I would say, steps. Not the last step is when you take somebody's property, you should have all this engineering and all this other fees and budgeting done way before this, and then you do, you should have to lay it up to do what you have to do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Russ Frank, fourth and One Gates Drive. I wasn't coming here today to speak about this issue, but since the Hicks family and the lawyer mentioned the word eminent domain, I remember talking to you guys via Zoom about a year ago about why did you do E, D, E, C, B, A, not D, A, leading B to the N? And I said, we're going to use the word eminent domain to take over our property, just like Sunoco did with this playground. And I think that's wrong.
Hello, my name is Sean Ellsworth, I live on Ellis Lane in the East Ocean Township, close to the X farm. And I do appreciate the work that you've all put into this and the process that you're following, but I couldn't help but look around the room as I listen tonight, and I looked at this banner above your head, says respecting the past. And I looked at this poster in the back right corner, it says, "A government closest to its people serves the people best." I'm very excited for holding this meeting tonight and listening, because I think the best decision on this matter is clear to the people that serve. Thank you.
Jacqueline Catona Webber, I've lived in East Ocean Township for fifty-three years. I was in the horse business for about twenty-five. Everything that they're talking about the horse business is true. It's a nuisance, a public nuisance, everybody's attracted to them, they come to the fence, but I don't want to talk about that. I wanted to talk about eminent domain in this township. Hank Belber bought what is now called Russell. When he was planning to build Russell, possibly a hundred homes, the township told him he had to put in a sewer line, down Line Road. Hank didn't want to do a pumping station up the hill on Line Road, so this township did eminent domain on my neighbor's property. They took nineteen acres, I'm sorry, it paid nineteen thousand dollars, they took about nine acres, I don't think it's that, but even though, to run that sewer line through my neighbor's property so that he could build a development. Now, I ask you, what did that do to the public that we all needed that development put in there? It did nothing for us, except put more macadam on the road. There's possibly, I think it was a hundred acres, and those houses are jammed on that property. You could touch the house next door. We have more macadam, more rooftops, more traffic, more schoolchildren. These developments in East Ocean Township have not enhanced our township as far as I'm concerned. I had a conversation with Shu when I was voting. I asked him, why are you doing this, this trail? I said, this was beautiful farmland, and he smiled at me and said, no longer, it's not farmland anymore, so whatever land we have, we should try to keep it that way. The traffic is unbelievable. I used to leave my house and go to Valley Forge, and it would take me twelve minutes, now it takes me forty-five to an hour to get there.
Can I ask, can I ask you to direct your comments specifically to the trail? You're talking about development and township, and I assume from your comments you did not vote for it.
I found that really interesting, and I find that you did vote for it. But anyway, the things that are happening, my neighbor across the road from me, he's a biker, a bicycle, you can't go, he said to me, I'm going to use this quote, what the hell is wrong with your township? I said, what do you mean? Because that's Willis Town right across the street from me. He said, I can't even get up to second gear because of the stop signs and the lines on the road, and then I get going and it stops because there's nothing else to do. All I've seen now are people walking on that road. I live on Line Road, and I've got a lot of bicyclists coming up and down Line Road. These people like to ride together, they don't like to ride like this, and this trail can't handle two bicycles together on that trail. I also want to know about your liability, and I don't want to hear about potholes, I want to hear what happens when somebody gets hurt on that trail. That's, I want to know what that insurance liability costs. Do you have any kind of answer for it?
We have, is it a ten million dollar blanket on our liability, Rick?
And what does that cost the township?
There's no additional cost for the trails.
There is no additional cost for the trail, it's covered under our broad liability coverage as a municipal government.
Being a business owner all...
I don't know who that was, please.
Being a business owner all my life, I do know that when you increase whatever you're doing on that insurance policy, there is, there is some financial problems where you have to pay more for that. I'll never believe you when you tell me you can have all that trail, and you can have all these people that have never been on the trail before, and you're not going to be increased in your insurance.
With all due respect, I've been an insurance broker for fifty years, and...
Oh, you.
I did property cathy insurance, so...
I'm sorry?
Please be civil.
Excuse me, I was looking over here.
No, no.
And I turned and I said, oh, you!
David, go ahead.
I'm just...
I got somebody who's in the bed.
Yeah, I'm just speaking as an insurance broker in a property cathy business, there's no additional cost for having the trail. We have trails already, we have a park system, we have a playground, there's no, there's no rating base to increase the cost of insurance.
Well, I'll tell you what, we have a beautiful park that we spent a lot of money for, for land that could not be used for anything. The golf course was not interested in it. We spent a lot of money for it, we maintain it, and to add more trails for... We spent a lot of money for, we maintain it, and to add more trails for people to do what? Because you want the bicycle trail. You told me when I went to vote that you wanted a bicycle trail. You were willing, you said to me, do you want me to tell you about all of my bicycling through Europe? I said, no, I don't want to hear that. It was your idea for that.
No, let me, let me.
Interesting, I know it right in Europe, actually.
Let me offer a comment in response to that, ma'am. David Shewy was not on the board when the Paoli Pipe Trail was conceived or planned.
I'm aware of that.
He is a trail supporter, as I am. I have the bicycle as well. I'm, but we were not on the board when this started.
Let me tell you this.
No, 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 let me finish.
I'll finish your statement.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm gonna, in due respect to you.
I was voting, and I was talking to Marty Stink. David came up to Marty, right next to me, and whispered in his ear, the county is going for the trail. That's what he told Marty. So he had to be very active in it. So he wasn't on the board, but he was very active in it. And my question is, why do you people come in here to this township and want to change it from where, our township, from where you came from?
Well, let me comment on that. I've, I've been here in East Scotiastown Township since March of 1983. So I'm not a newbie, but I'm not a generational landowner. So us coming into the township, there are a lot of people, whether they're in Rossmore, whether they're in Charter Chase, whether they're in the villages of Hershey's Mill, whether they're in Bowtree, and many other fine developments in East Scotiastown Township, who have come here to have their American dream of having a nice place, a safe municipality, good services, and a fine home to live in. You were here maybe before that, when there were farmlands. We are a suburbanized township now, regrettably, if you want to put it in those terms, but we are a suburbanized township. There are service requirements, and I will tell you, the trail, the Paoli Pipe Trail, from my opinion, subjective, observational, experiential, however you want to refer to my opinion, is a long-term generational asset that I think is gonna benefit this community the way trails have benefited other communities. Whether it's Chester Valley Trail, Skookel River Trail, the one that David's been talking about, Rails Trail. People, some people like trails and other people don't. I think it's a long-term value. Now, that said, we are not bringing Philadelphia here. In fact, if some of you might recall, about two years ago, we had a proposal come before the board. It was before Michelle and John were on the board, from the, as I recall, right, correct? The Haken Group came in and wanted to change our zoning, and we requested we change our zoning for a parcel that the Hicks family provided to them for development, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, so.
No, please, please, I'd like to know about this.
So that was, I think, a proposal to change the zoning to permit 280 apartments at that location. We turned that down. Now, had that gone in along the Paoli Pipe, there would have been 280 residents there, new traffic demands. Some of it may have gone through the business park, because it was located next to the business park in the southeast corner. I'm trying to give you an explanation, so please don't roll your eyes at me, ma'am.
But I know they have.
I'm a resident just like you. I ran for office and I'm pleased to serve. We were not necessarily going to agree. I'm doing the best I can to provide you information. Please don't roll your eyes at me and be respectful is what I'm trying to be to you.
I'm not rolling my eyes at you.
Now, the development could have been there. It could have been approved by the board, and what impact might that have had to the farm estate that the Hicks had? But it was turned down.
Yeah, it was a little test.
Now, I will tell you, the Haken Group has sold that property to another entity in the township, a business entity by the name of a cereal. They may very well put up a large white industrial structure there.
Now you can do your job again.
No, they have a right to do that now, under the zoning. So there are changes, and the dynamics have changed within the municipality, and the requirements it has legally to provide for land use are evident through case law and the municipality's planning code. This township has done a good job of planning. It's a suburban municipality, and there are different elements associated with a rural landscape. The Hicks Farm is a wonderful gem within the context of East Scotiastown Township as a fully suburbanized community. The relationship with the trail to the property, we are gonna disagree tonight. We're, you're, at least you're gonna disagree with my position on it. My position is, I see this as a long-term value. It is not a trail to nowhere. It's a trail to a point. Trails have been incremental, and I think that they're, in the long term, the next generation, when you and I are gone, is gonna benefit from this, whether they're riding eblacks or otherwise. Now, that said.
Excuse me, I would like to say, one more comment, and I'm going to. I was the chairman of the historic commission in this township. We did an ordinance, historical ordinance, to protect all of our historic resources. Worked for a long time to get this done. Presented it to our supervisors, and by the way, we had in this, in this room, every historic house in this township. Where's it gone? They were, township paper it to be, we have it all framed, we have it, the names there, we did all the research on it, it's gone. This was a historic township. The board and supervisors took all of the teeth out of that ordinance for all of the developers, Marty. You made it easy for the developers to knock down some of our own houses.
Let me comment on that. Excuse me, ma'am. Let me comment, let me comment, since we're opening up a broad panel here of discussion on our municipality, on historical ordinances, historical regulatory ordinances.
Because this is a historic township.
Most municipalities in Chester County have historical. Most municipalities in Chester County, of our, of our 73 municipalities in Chester County, they all have historical resources. Homes, farms, other historically significant resources. Historical regulatory ordinances, when we talk about freedom of our ability to make choices, eminent domain is absolutely one of the strongest powers of local government. But check out some of the historical regulatory ordinances and what they impose upon historical resource owners of properties and the requirements that certified historic districts have on property owners when they have to go to historical architectural review boards to get approval to replace a roof or to replace a window. So, now, excuse me, excuse me, hold on, hold on, you may come up and make comment. This is not why we're talking.
Point of order, point of order. Mike, we're not here to debate.
Very good, I'll.
I'm actually gonna throw all this to a, to a close. We had this discussion on a single motion, and I think we're pretty much exhausted the 20 minutes that we. It's 17, and we have other business to conduct this evening. How many residents do we have that are speaking? All right, we have two more, and then that's it, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it. So, go ahead, ma'am.
My name's Vanessa Trowell, I live on School Lane. I hike every day with my dog. We go for four or five mile walks. I've never once used this trail. We are blessed with so many preserves and hiking trails and open lands around us that I would have to fight to this, or drive to this, to go to this trail. I'd rather go to an open land and preserve. So I just don't see a way to take someone's land against their will. If they want to sell it, that's their choice, but that's their hard-earned land. That's their family pride. Just doesn't seem right to take it for a trail.
Dan Truett, 1430 Grand Oak Lane. For those of you just joining the program, yes, I'm your former state representative, and Michelle is my wife. I'm usually reluctant to get up here and talk in these meetings, because she's township supervisor, and I don't want to make her job any harder than it is. But there's a few subjects that get me wound up as much as eminent domain does. First, I want to ask a couple of quick questions. I don't know, do you guys, any kind of a ballpark estimate how much it's gonna cost the township if you move forward with this action and the family decides to appeal in court? What are the potential costs when we're already over budget? Mike, would Michael comment or Rick?
He said 25 hours of legal work, and we're assuming about $200 an hour, Dan.
So.
$5,000.
$5,000, and that's for the appeal or for the initial?
Just for the initial, initial hearing, it's not, not an appeal.
All right, so we're already.
Without getting into any legal advice that might be discussed with the board in executive session, there, eminent domain code does lay out a procedure. There's generally a two-step process if the property owner wants to challenge the power of the local government to have exercised the power of eminent domain. That's one step. And then the second step is the valuation phase to determine what the value of the property acquired. Most eminent domain matters, the power of the government to have exercised the power of eminent domain is not in question. And the matter is simply decide that the valuation phase. Every matter is unique. The expenses to both the property owner and to the government agency depend on steps that the property owner takes, and it's obviously outside of the power of the condemning authority. But there is a process. You file the declaration of taking. From there, the property owner can challenge, if they want, the power of the government to have exercised the power of eminent domain. Most eminent domain cases do not go in that direction, and you proceed directly to the valuation phase. Importantly, the eminent domain code expressly states, matter of fact, as I think about it, it may very well be the only statute that I'm aware of that expressly states that the parties may settle the matter amongst themselves at any point during the proceedings. So simply filing a declaration of taking to acquire the property does not, expressly does not foreclose the ability of the government agency or the government authority and the property owner to reach an amicable settlement.
So you could drag on, that could get expensive. It's just my question, you're already over budget. That was just one question I had. Another question I had, one of the things that disturbed me about this process, and so that you all understand, when you guys go into executive session on Zoom, I go into my office at home, close the door so that I don't hear things I'm not supposed to hear. So it was about a week and a half ago, it's the first time I learned from the Hicks family that eminent domain was under consideration here. And I was, I can't tell you how wound up I was about this. And I wondered, did the board, in executive session, authorize Buckley, Brian, and Mark Gordon to threaten a resident with the use of eminent domain, or did they take that action upon themselves? Dan, there was, there was no threat. The, the process of, of, wait, does anybody? Excuse me? Excuse me?
Your township's listening, Frank isn't in the driveway.
Dan Smith. Did you call me? Did you call me, Rick?
Yes, I did call.
At whose authority did you call?
I called you, I called you because I've known you for, I don't know, 40-some years.
More than that?
Yeah.
Who put you up here?
Nobody.
No, you just called me on your account?
I called you on my own volition to let you. No, I didn't threaten you. I just said that.
What did you say?
The train's coming, Phil.
What did you say?
The train is coming. I said, the train is coming, that the, based on what I know, the majority of the board wants this trail, and I encourage you to negotiate, try and get the best deal you could.
And you said, if someone signed the paper, we're gonna take.
The train's coming, that's what I told you, Phil.
Here you go. Now you're lying. So, I came up here not to, I don't want to make this a personal attack, but a personal appeal. I've known four of you guys. Obviously, I've known Michelle for 30, 38 years, but, I mean, I've known you guys for a long time. Marty, I considered you a friend. Mike, I considered you a friend. Dave, I barely know you, but apparently you're a real cousin of mine. I've known John for a number of years. This is a personal appeal to you. If you asked me five, 10 years ago, knowing what I know about you guys, that someday we'd be standing here talking about taking a piece of land from a family that's been in this township for 200 years, I wouldn't have believed it. I just wouldn't have believed it. Marty, I can't believe you're gonna want to, I can't believe that you would do this in your, at the end of your last term, on your way out, that you would, you would take this action. Mike, I just, I just can't believe that this is in your character. I, taking, taking a person's or a family's land by eminent domain is one of the most evil things a government entity can do. That's how I feel about it. Rick, I love you for everything that you've done for this township, but what about the situation? I thought, what if next month or next year, we decided we wanted to run a feeder trail down East Strasburg Lane and take a piece of land from you? I just can't, I couldn't have dreamed of this township doing that to you after all that you've done for us. And the Hicks family, when they keep that land as a, as a farm there, when they could sell it and turn it into a business park, as some folks have pointed out, they're doing us all a gigantic favor. And I know my personality was, if you came to take a piece, if I owned that land and you came to me and tried to take it away from me, first of all, we'd be in a cold, dead hands kind of situation, right? I'd be, you know, tied to the posts out in front of the bulldozers and so forth. But then after that, the next thing I'd be doing is selling my land to the, to the highest bidder and telling you guys, you know, go do, no. I'm saying, that's not a bad thing. I know you think that this is a company that township needs for long-term benefit, but as bad as I am, you probably wouldn't know it. I walk 1,000 miles a year in the Grand Oak Development. And after you finish building this trail, I'm gonna continue walking 1,000 miles a year in the Grand Oak Development. We don't need this trail. It does not rise to the level of. All of us have been alive. Thank you.
I know that you want to stop, but I just wanted to take a step back. I'm a resident of East Ocean. I've lived here for 50 years, and Joanne Mercer is with me. We're the positive, lovely people, hope it never changes. So, I'm here, everybody here, and what we really need to look at in East Ocean and West Ocean and this world are our children and what they are not being able to do. This has nothing to do with the trail, but everything to do with the trail. I have four grandchildren. They age 12, and four, and eight, and 13. What COVID has done has put these children in a situation where they are not socialized. What we need, and Jason does a great job at East Ocean, I love Jason, I, I love the activities that you have, but I am witness to children who have nowhere to go but other people's basements. And they go from place to place, and they have Snapchat, and they can do instant party, and it's no good. They need to be in the park with structured activities. Let's get a DJ, and let's get these kids a place to stay in the park where they're safe. I worry about a trail where there's no lights and children on their bikes. They need to get, they need to get free, everything they need. It means 2021. It's not the age that you and I grew up in. I'm 67 years old. This is not what I grew up in. So what I'm saying is, I appreciate all your hard work, I appreciate everybody's viewpoint. Let's take back the stuff and look at what we really need. It's our children, their safety, they need things to do. They need our love, our support. Let's just take a step back while we're all deciding what this. They need our love, our support. Let's just take a step back while we're all deciding what this is going to be, which I really hope will go nowhere but in the park with more activities for our children who are our future.
I have a public comment at one hour and 30 minutes. And thank you all for your comments. And we have a motion on the floor that has been made and seconded. So I am going to call the question on, yeah, the motion.
If you like, I can read the.
Go ahead.
Resolution. I'll read the entire resolution for clarity. So just bear with me.
This is 201. This is the William.
Yep. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of East Ocean Township authorizing the acquisition of real property interests situated in the township of East Ocean, Chester County, Pennsylvania, by purchase or condemnation for the purpose of the public recreation project known as the Paley Pike Trail. Whereas East Ocean Township is engaged in consultation and cooperation with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation with regard to that certain public recreation project known as the Paley Pike Trail. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of the Township, defined in the resolution as the Board, is authorized and empowered pursuant to applicable law, including without limitation, Section 2201 of Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code, citation to the section, to acquire a real property interest necessary for and in furtherance of completion of the Paley Pike Trail. And whereas, in order to facilitate the Paley Pike Trail, the township requires certain permanent and temporary easement interests and rights of way or fee simple, excuse me, just lost my place here, or fee simple ownership in, on, over, to and through certain parcels of real property situated within the township and as more fully depicted on Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is a plan showing the required sidewalk easement, the temporary construction easement and the area of fee simple acquisition, which is referred to on the plan as a right-of-way line. And is more fully described by meets and bounds as to the required permanent easement and the required right-of-way on Exhibit B. Exhibit B is just the meets and bounds description of the easement and right-of-way areas, rights-of-way areas. Whereas the necessary real property interests include a permanent easement having an area measuring 12,360 square feet, more or less, again identified on Exhibit A as the required sidewalk easement, and a temporary construction easement having an area measuring 12,346 square feet, more or less, identified on Exhibit A, the plan, as temporary construction easement, and right-of-way having an area measuring 15,892 square feet, more or less, identified on the plan, Exhibit A, as required right-of-way. And whereas the necessary real property interests are, as of the date of this resolution, part of the real property identified as Chester County Tax Mat Parcel 53-3-1.8. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, that the acquisition of the necessary real property interests by purchase or condemnation according to law is authorized for and in connection with the public recreation project known as the Paley Pike Trail. Almost done. Be it further resolved by the Board and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, that the necessary real property interests for the public recreation project known as Paley Pike Trail shall be acquired by township by purchase or condemnation under the provisions of the Acts of Assembly as more fully set forth in this resolution. This is the resolution. And be it further resolved by the Board and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, that the township manager and the township solicitor are authorized and directed to take any and all steps which they in their discretion deem necessary and proper and in the best interests of the township to effectuate this resolution, including without limitation, the filing of one or more declarations of taking under and pursuant to the Pennsylvania eminent domain code with the citation adopted by the Board of Supervisors of East Ocean Township this, like they apply in 2021.
Thank you, Michael. With that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No?
No and hell no.
The motion carries three to two. I have a second motion to make. I would like to.
Excuse me?
I would like to move.
I think this is a bush of, of Marcus fascist fruit.
I'd like to. I'd like to move the Department of Resolution 2021-200 to authorize the condemnation of a permanent and temporary easement and acquisition of right-of-way across Peter and Philip's land that are required for the Paley Pike Trail. Their authorization is conditioned by the requirement, I'm asking, please. This authorization is conditioned by the requirement that the township solicitor postpone filing the declaration of taking with the court for a period of one week to allow negotiation to continue to see if we can come to an amicable resolution with the Hicks parties, interested parties. That applies. This, I'm going to ask if the Board has any comments.
One thing that you might read from the resolution on this one. Whereas, Michael, that you read previously, the necessary real property interests include a permanent easement having an area measuring 8,482 square feet, more or less identified on the exhibit, and that's required sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement having an area of 7,011 square feet identified in Exhibit A. I'd like to share the extent of the particular.
Thanks, Michael.
That's correct. The difference between the, differences between the prior resolution and this resolution are obviously with regard to the area, the measure of the area in sidewalk easement and temporary construction easement. And this resolution does not include a reference to a permanent, compared to a fee simple right-of-way because none is contemplated on this particular property.
And this is the Tax Mat Parcel number 53-3-1.9.
That's correct.
All right. At this point, I can call the question because we've had other comments. I'm going to call the question on this.
A separate motion, I encourage you to accept public comment. However, you are within the bounds of, if it's going to be duplicative of comments that were made generally with regard to the first resolution. I think it's fair to ask members of the public to not be duplicative in their comments. This particular resolution is with regard to parcel 53-3-1.9.
I'll second to the motion.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mike. I'm going to open it up to. This is Peter and Philip. The board first. Any more comments?
My comments remain. Same for me. No more comments.
Thank you.
Opposed.
Any other public comments that wouldn't be repetitive to the comments already made?
Just two points. One is, I would just request that it not be weak before you file. The Hicks family, there are, as you saw them, many of them who own an interest in this farm. I will make myself available, but I can tell you, I could be up here all week negotiating and it's not going to happen. So I would ask for six to ten. Number two, I would ask that you authorize your consultants, specifically Lisa Thomas and your engineers, to attend meetings and to prepare architectural renderings and engineering drawings that are actually, they're not out here today. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Last question. Were these resolutions published in your agenda package?
No.
Because I, look, I didn't see any resolutions. I think that's the fact. You have a defect that's taken.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Some of you may know me. I'm Dolores Higgins. I live at 904 Vista Drive. I used to be a member of the Historic Commission. And Mr. Lynch, you were wrong on what you were saying. We can, we can, but I do know all 91 houses that are on our historic registry. And there's very fine, you cut a fine line about that. But I don't want to get into that here because that's not what we're here for. What we are, what we are talking about tonight is your proposal for the trail and everything. I'll say it this way. I was offered as a member of the Start Commission to be on the original committee that was put together to develop this idea of a trail. I turned that opportunity down because I thought it was an utterly ridiculous idea. Person who did take the position on that trail, the first question I asked him, are the Hicks on board with this whole idea? And he flat out looked at me and said, oh, yes, they love it. Well, five frigging years later, we find out they don't. And on top of that, one of the big reasons you all gave us for why we needed this was so that the town center could be more effectively used and acquire ways to get to it. Well, the last year has hit a big dent into the industrial park. And it's also lost us two more businesses on that trail. Why don't you pay attention to what needs to be paid attention to? Namely, making sure our businesses are here and staying and stop worrying about us. So the trail.
I'm not sure, I will address the comment about paying attention to our business parks and our business community. I'm not sure whether you're aware of it or not, but the township. But the township presently has formed and is underway for the last six months or more with the Business Park Task Force. We've been meeting and interviewing with the various business interests, whether it's CTDI, CERO, Charter School, Ducklings, Comcast, to learn what they've learned and experienced during the CV19 period, how it may have affected their business plans, where they're going in the future. They will share that with us so that we can better service them. They're an important part of our tax base. So we have been looking at that and engaging that particular community. So I just leave a comment in that regard. There is information on the website about it.
Kate Mitchell, Gateswood Drive. I'm totally opposed to this land grab, taking up the Hicks property. I think it's outrageous. The trail is ridiculous as is, but this proposal that has been presented is appropriate. I think with no engineering or background of any kind in this field, I already walk in this corporate park. I think the corporate park is there. It's used. It's a viable option. And I beg you to consider it. This land does not need to be taken. It's a Chester County, East Ocean jewel. And the family themselves, the Hicks family, love it. And I think it's disgusting that you're going to steal this from them. Thank you.
My name is Melanie McHenry. I live in Thorndale, Pennsylvania. However, I'm an instructor at Outreach Farm on Hicks property. The sign behind you is first and foremost on the homepage of your website. I respectfully request you tell me how this is going to fit each one of those individually. Furthermore, usually when this type of thing happens, it prefaces a four-lane highway and houses historically. Could somebody please address each single one of those statements? And tell me how this fits in.
Let me make a comment because I haven't really commented yet. This is, this is a tough decision for me. My, my voting record will show you that I generally oppose the use of eminent domain to require, to acquire easements. For example, Energy Transfer Partners taking property by eminent domain, I opposed that. I protested it. I talked with people whose properties were taken. I advised them on aspects of easement and so on. When the township was considering the changes to the King Road 352 intersection that involved being required by the state to consider a traffic circle there. It would have taken, I'm going to answer your question. Just please be respectful. You're not a resident and I'm allowing you to speak, so. It doesn't matter. You can respect my, my discussion here. I opposed the widening of the road and the circle because of the impact on those local residents. Two homes possibly would have been needed to be demolished and one home would have had Route 352 within four feet of their front door. And one of the historic homes would have been affected. But that's not the scenario we're facing today. On the flip side, many years ago, I sat on the Pennsylvania Rails to Trails Conservancy Advisory Board. An organization that converts land used to trail use. When I was on that advisory board, when the controversial Radnor Trail was proposed, the opposition to that trail was astounding, to say the least. Today, homes selling adjacent to that trail are advertised as a selling point. And the trail is currently being expanded to make cycling and walking trails to the Radnor High School and to the new Penn Medicine Building. Our township was developed in the seventies and eighties when subdivisions and land development focused on automobile-centric model. We have 108 cul-de-sacs and 10 square miles in East Ocean Township with very few sidewalks. Getting from one place to the next requires a car. And getting anywhere on foot or by bicycle is kicking your, leaving your own hands. Paley Pike Trail was a vision of the comprehensive plan and the feasibility study was completed in 2015. Today, much of the trail is completed connecting our open space, our parks, our elementary school, Paley Pike businesses and our business park, trails here. Today's home buyers' top three priorities are open space. We currently have two and a half times the average municipality in open space. That's no accident. Number two, parks. We have a destination park in our community. And when people talk about wants and needs, we don't need a park. We don't need a park playground for our kids to play on. It was $850,000. But we have it and it's a pride of our, of our township. The third thing they want, don't interrupt me. The third thing they want is pedestrian cycling trails. Those are the three things that buyers want. The top priorities out of 10. And for East Ocean Township to remain competitive, we need to change to a more connected community. Someone talked earlier about why not build it in the neighborhoods. The Conference of Plan actually has plans to connect the neighborhoods to the trail. Right now, over 5,000 residents live within walking distance of the trail. Right now, over 5,000 residents live within walking distance of the trail when it's completed. So that's, that's part of the plan. The, the trail right now, Section B of the trail has to be completed because users, cyclists, schoolchildren, joggers can't be required to leave the trail at the end of Section C, which is completed, go out on the Paley Pike and then rejoin the trail on Section A. It's just not safe. Those of you who have maybe tried to walk on Paley Pike in that section or ridden a bicycle in that section realize that it's a, that it's a hazard. So here's, here's what I believe. This process has been really hard on the Hicks family, highly emotional. They have a legacy here in East Ocean Township of hundreds of years. People who served on this board, people who made decisions about how this township was developed and what services are provided by these, by this township. I also know that representatives of the township have negotiated in good faith for 10 months with, with the Hicks family members. I also know the trail is here and it's an important feature of our community and it needs to be completed. The trail will ultimately benefit the township as a whole and businesses and personal properties adjacent to the trail. I've seen this happen in my trail development experience on advisory boards. I've seen how it impacts the, the future desirability of businesses and homes. And, and finally, it's just unsafe to ask trail users to enter the Paley Pike roadway for that section. So in, in a kind of circuitous way, I hope I've answered your question about my interest. Thank you very much. You can have a seat and we're going to call a question. I, I, I will, I will finish this. Sorry. Okay. With that, I'm going to call the question on that, on the second motion. All is in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? No.
No.
Three to two. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, we're going to move. Yeah, um, we're going to take a five-minute break. Anyone who doesn't want to stick around and hear the emergency services reports.
Shame on you. Don't forget to buy war grass. We don't want you guys. You got war grass. You're all wrong. We offer you to buy war grass. Now what for you?
All right, Julie.
We have to continue the rest of this meeting. All right, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. I won't, I won't call any votes until you get back. Yeah, we do. You have time. I'm going to start back with the emergency services reports. Is the chief still here? Make a close to the back doors.
How come she goes first?
Go first, honey.
Um, I'll get the door. You can.
All right, Chief.
Okay, back on. Usually I start off with this.
It's nine o'clock.
... report and, um, I like to just highlight that just briefly. Rather than giving you numbers after everything you've listened to, I just want to highlight what you would expect. Our numbers are higher for calls for service compared to the pandemic.
Marty, Marty and me.
Marty, we've reconvened. If you kindly take your seat as the chief gives her report unless you're being disposed of or you're disposing yourself.
She's told me about crime.
Bottom line, pandemic, calls for, pandemic, but they're lower than they were prior to the pandemic. One thing that I find concerning, continue to find concerning, is that the stressors on our society that the pandemic have caused continue to impact the calls for service. In the last 30 days in East Ocean alone, there were two sexual assaults, two assaults. One particularly concerning, an employee assaulted another employee with hyperspray. We have had a lot of continuing problems with overdoses, mental health calls, fights, disturbances. And we're hoping that the stressors that this has created for everybody subside so that the calls for service get back to what's more normal. The only trend that I want to point out to anybody who uses the park is that we have a group of individuals who are using a device that defeats the locking mechanism of your car. And as a result, we had three individuals who locked their cars and unfortunately their wallets and or their purses were stolen out of their locked vehicle. So we continue to tell people, please take your valuables out of your car.
How does that, Chief, how does that work?
Basically, it pulls the lock out. It pulls the internal working mechanism out of the lock.
It was a screw on end and a slide end and put it there possibly.
Kind of like a slam hammer, a slap hammer, a slam hammer.
Well, Chief, I had a couple of questions for you when you're done.
Yes.
So on next door, I noticed that, um, a number of people have mentioned car break-ins in Goshen Valley.
Yes.
Are you seeing a higher number of car break-ins in a particular area besides or just at that area?
I would say Goshen Valley is the peak area where we're having break-ins and we have a current investigation working in that area.
Good. And then another thing I noticed, uh, it was a little bit scary. Someone had posted a, a video of a drone in the middle of the night kind of just hovering in front of their house. Are thieves using drones now to?
Nah, we have seen one individual that, um, has been using a drone as a key to common access.
Oh, nice.
But unfortunately, unless we can identify who's operating the drone. Unfortunately, people give a report and by the time officers get there, they see the patrol car pull up and they take the drone away. Because of the distance at which you can operate a drone, it's very difficult. But we tell people that if you see a drone operating in this, we just need to call us. We're going to do what we can to help.
Chief, can we, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Not that I've seen a drone in my window, but to protect my property and my family, if I take it down?
You really don't recommend that because anytime you discharge whatever you've left, you are mostly endangering somebody else. Um, but.
It's all bad?
It's all bad. I vote for that. Thank you, Charlie. And again, you're still using a projectile and because of the possibility of hurting somebody.
I'm speaking pool.
Trap.
It's a pretty expensive trap.
They also make shotgun shells. Very limited, large.
Chief, on the, on these two sexual assaults, I know they're under investigation. So there's very little you can say. Can you share anything about the magnitude of the assault? Was this an out and out rape? Was this a verbal sexual assault? Was this a physical sexual assault?
One was a rape involving a minor. At this point, I really can't provide more comment. The other one was an individual who came forth reporting a sexual assault that happened a number of years ago. That through therapy, they're finally feeling comfortable enough to talk about it before they. And because Pennsylvania is changing statutes, we can now investigate crimes with, because there's a longer statute of limitations.
Much longer. Chair, chair, those numbers.
Uh, that's too, that's too, that's too complicated to go through. But the bottom line is.
It's like an older voice. You know, I think you're welling up now that I'm seventy. I may talk.
I'll tell you that it's not quite that far, but, um, it's kind of like statute of limitations is frozen if you're a minor. And it starts to toll a lot later. So that, that's the good news.
Any, any questions on the board? Any other questions for, for Chief?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
It's a late night. Thank you for sticking around.
Not a problem.
And that, that goes for the rest of the crew, Carmen and everybody else.
And although most people have left, thank you for the opportunity of hearing you talk about what's important to you. The vast majority of people have no idea who I am. I've been here for eight, nine years and it's a privilege to listen to the residents talk about what's important to them. So thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks for coming tonight. Like you said, happy to be.
Carmen, be good. Now I can go.
I mean, if you bring me some fire, I'm ready.
Chivalry is a dead. Good night, Chief.
Good night.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Carmen.
I'm glad I'm on the side of it. The emergency services reports I give you tonight are just for East Ocean Township. And I am brief as always. Goshen Fire Company, we had 17 fire calls. Excuse me. We had nine fire police calls and EMS 141. That's from Goshen Fire Company. Malvern got their number, their numbers right this month. We had 25 calls for basic life and 21 advanced life. And for good fellowship, their percentages are down a little bit also for East Ocean. They had 49. They run 11 to 13 percent. They're like 9.6. So. We did have a couple of major incidents. I'm sure the board is up on, on awareness of it. A couple of things from the fire company. We are having a fair this year. We're not quite sure what it will positively look like because they're still talking to Department of Agriculture and so forth. We had a very limited flower sale up at Station 56 in Hershey's Mill. And they didn't buy many flowers because they, they didn't know how it would do and sold out like three hours. So people, people have been contributing as needed. They've been supporting the fire companies. And we've been supporting them back with however we can help people. So, even on one limited duty right now, it's been, this has been a real proud time for me to be able to have to go out and do this during COVID when no one else would do it. You know, so I'm just glad I did it.
Thanks, Carmen.
Questions?
Malvern, thanks for putting that perspective prior year into the report. So we can see prior year, year to date, 20, year to date, 2021. Thanks for getting those comments in there. Gives a little perspective.
Don't give them too much credit.
No, we're okay.
Mr. Ware, if you'd like to just give us a brief summary of the financial report.
I waited three hours for that, didn't I?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The good news is we are, the budget, we look very good versus the budget year to date, uh, also with prior year. Year-to-date positive variance versus the budget is five hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, uh, and the general fund balances on May thirty-first was seven million, one fifty-seven, nine, ten. We're seeing expenses are down, uh, versus prior year as well as the budget. We did have a pretty conservative budget. Things like the police we saw, um, um, due our anticipated surplus credit, uh, in general. Full year expenses for the police and revenues look to be in line with our 2021 adopted budget net result. Our earned income tax is up, uh, six percent versus budget. It's fourteen percent higher than the prior year. Real estate transfer tax is seeded year-to-date expectations by nearly forty-four percent, prior year by over a hundred percent. Codes are up over fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, or seventy-two percent versus, uh, versus budget due to increased number of building permits that we've seen. Uh, all in all, very solid financial work year-to-date and net.
Earned income tax is interesting because we, we kind of anticipated a little bit of doom and gloom with, uh, with COVID and it's actually up.
Yes.
Well, uh, though I wanted to ask a question on that EIT, that six percent date and that, uh, you may not be able to answer tonight, but when, uh, Keystone Collection Group sends those electronic, uh, transmissions in of the amounts collected, it usually has within what year they've collected for that particular week? They come, you know, they come in weekly.
Yeah.
So it will say, uh, collections from two thousand and nineteen, um, and sometimes they're, they're, they're a credit, uh, that's reversed, but sometimes they're a debit.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, they, they've had to pay back something, but, uh, so I, I'd be curious to know what the numbers are from twenty twenty relative to twenty twenty-one. In other words, are, did people delay paying some of their earned income tax? They hold off on it, um, and now it's being collected, uh, and so that, that breakout on each of those transmittals, uh, would be interesting because that six percent, uh, might be an asterisk.
Sure.
Six percent because of the twenty twenty catch-up from the CD nineteen period.
Sure, I'll look into that for you.
It may, may be off target, but I have some sense it might be relevant.
Yeah, I'll find that out.
Just on the transfer tax, we have three houses, let's see what they asked for, over a million dollars.
Swiss, Swiss Arms, switch hands again.
Again.
I feel like an office building should have to sell every three years.
You know, we should have an ordinance that makes them sell.
Exactly, a motion.
It's a taking.
All right, um, any other questions on the financial report? I'm gonna move on to approval of the minutes in the Treasury report. Uh, the minutes from June first, uh, twenty twenty-one, I, everyone have any comments?
I think I did a comment.
Okay.
You have a comment? Marty, Marty, there's a.
I, I think that there was a mistake as well.
Yeah, there was that one and it didn't matter.
It was, uh, it, it was on page one, um, old business. She continued to, after the initials, I think she continued to say, after the initial survey is done, just the clarifier there.
Line forty-one.
Take the two out.
That's fine, take the two out, whatever. I didn't see anything else.
Marty, have any?
Uh, there was someone sticking right carefully, so there, there.
Okay, I'll entertain a moment, motion to approve.
I move that we approve the, uh, minutes, so.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Any public comment? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries five, zip. Pressures report. If you want to get a chance to take a look at the bills and anyone have any questions regarding that Treasury report?
Uh, on those disbursements, I have, had no questions, uh, specific.
No, I had no, I had no questions, I actually. I would, uh, make a motion that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the treasure. The expenditures is presented in the expenditure register and summarized in the Treasury report.
Thanks. Any, uh, further board comment?
No.
Any comment from the public? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries five, nothing. Back to old business, um, consider the proposal for Phase One archaeological survey. We, uh, considered this. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time talking about it because we've already talked about it and the only thing we've done is table a vote twice, so, um, anyone have any comments before we, uh?
Seventeen thousand four hundred.
Yeah, I can't remember that cookie. I want to know who gave me that cookie.
Uh, I, I, I have no comment. I, you know, I question the whole requirement by historical commission in Pennsylvania in the first place to impose this.
It's the federal government.
It's the federal government, I know. But in any rate, um, so, uh, you know, I, if there's a motion to start, uh, I would motion, um, offer the motion that we, uh, uh, accept the proposal for the Phase One archaeological study for this section of the trail and get it underway at seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. With, um, McMahon Associates. Do you want to say it?
Somebody say it.
I'll say it. Thank you, Marty. You're welcome, David. Any further question about this?
On the record, I don't want to spend another seventeen thousand four hundred dollars on the trail.
All right, um, any public comment on this? You're not, I'm gonna draw a question.
I have one, I have one comment. My name is Sue Rock. I live over at Sommet House, so I'm not even near the trail or anything, but my grandchildren live over at Maridale. I have two granddaughters. They go to school at East and Pugent. Putting a sidewalk across the street, I do want you to think about that because children, there's two schools right there. They're going to be encouraged to cross that street.
Yeah, that's not really a good motion, but I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
No. No.
Motion carries three, two. We have, again, Fleming proposal. This is a proposal we considered in the last meeting. We have staff to go back and see if they could get fixed costs for two years and a couple other concessions, uh.
Way to the Milltown Dam project. I will have to speed it up because I'm having some mic issues, so hopefully everybody can hear me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I had word requests. We did, we did go back, uh, to Gannett Fleming and tried to, uh, negotiate some of the points that the board brought up in the June first meeting. So just real quickly, I'll go over the three that the board brought up. Use the twenty twenty-one rates, uh, through the project since we're signing up basically in twenty twenty-one. Revisit the pricing for the virtual meetings and the gap between the virtual and in-person, uh, because the board seemed to, you know, interested in seeing that gap increase a little bit. And then just using some more concrete language to define specifically what a meeting entails. So happy to report, I had a conversation with Eric from Gannett Fleming and, uh, pretty much were able to, to accommodate us on all three to a certain extent. They're gonna use the twenty twenty-one rates. The in-person meeting rates and the virtual meeting rates, uh, both went down and the, uh, the gap has increased a little bit. And we gave more clarification on what a meeting entails on page six of the proposal. Uh, you know, essentially a, uh, in-person meeting can entail four hours without going over that rate and the, uh, the virtual would be an hour. So on, on its surface, it, it may only be probably nine to ten thousand dollars because, mainly because of the twenty twenty-one rate, rate usage. Uh, but, you know, talking internally, we have, uh, ample opportunity to sort of control worst-case scenario based on the meetings we want and utilizing virtual meetings and so forth, so, um, if, if the board is amenable to these changes, there is a motion on the table for it.
Yeah, and that, that is, that, um, the motion is for the entire package of services from Gannett Fleming, uh, for the, uh, to oversee essentially the, the project coordination and construction services. Once the Milltown Dam project gets underway, um, they will handle the bidding oversight and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have clarified the specifics of exactly, we just, we, we've been over it, so I guess it just kind of.
Well, it just flows in, yeah.
Sure. So yes, it is for the Milltown, Milltown Dam Park project and the ongoing, uh, bid and, uh, project coordination services for, for that park project.
Can I just clarify something? They've, they've revised the in-person meeting rate and put the, they give, they've given us the rate of thirty-six hundred ten dollars. That's for up to four hours in person. Is that correct?
Yes.
And yet, the, the, the virtual meeting rate was twenty-one sixty and they dropped it to eighteen twenty, but that's for one hour. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so that's a, that's a rate of, if we went into a four-hour Zoom meeting, it'd be seventy-two hundred dollars maybe, seventy-two hundred and eighty dollars. So those virtual meetings have to be kept short. That's a lot of money.
Sure.
Why are the, why are the virtual meetings so pricey?
I mean, I, I.
I'm stunned.
I would imagine it is the specifics of the consultants on the, the, uh, virtual call and their specific rates.
Okay. I just, I, I'm doing math. I'm like, wait a minute, eighteen hundred twenty dollars times four.
Yes, I mean, overall, there's a built-in cost associated with meeting in general versus just, you know, an hour.
Okay.
I understand the concern.
I, I just.
I can bring that up afterwards.
It's a lot of money.
Uh, you know, let, let me ask a question about that, those, uh, virtual rates. It's a good point, Michelle. The virtual meeting rates, is that just a residual carryover from CD nineteen or is that something that, that is just their, part of their standard way to communicate irrespective of what you are environment? Yeah, we have, we have a, an in-person meeting, he has to have, he has to have a power supply. So that's, that, so that's why we try, we, we wanted to try and do it via Zoom for all possible. But I kind of agree with Michelle. You know, we're talking the total contract here of about four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars and it's, it's, it, relative to that, it's a smaller percentage, but, um, why is a virtual rate at eighteen hundred, whatever the number is, per hour? I, I. In-person, but if you go back and look at page six, in-person, in-person meetings are both assumed to be one hour. If the onsite exceed four hours per team member, they reserve the right to, against the lump sum budget established for public coordination.
Correct. That was trying to make it clear. Explanation, but essentially if they're here for longer than four hours, they would, they would have the right to go and buff the on-ramp.
Sure, but I mean, still, their hour, their, their hourly rate, um. My point is the hourly rate before a Zoom meeting is eighteen hundred and twenty dollars. It's.
An hour.
An hour, and I, I, I am. Is that number? I mean, if you look at the, if you look at this.
How many people are professionals that are in those meetings? I mean.
Maybe that's what they add up.
Probably saying they got four of our engineers or three of our engineers and that.
Is that an absolute for every meeting? I mean, an in-person, an in-person meeting, an in-person meeting, if it ran four hours, it's nine hundred and two dollars per hour. We're double the rate for Zoom. It's, understand that.
Hard to argue with those numbers.
That's absurd to me.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Michelle.
That's a true.
I, I, I see this contract and getting it done, but that, that just seems, uh.
Can we, can we suggest that there go back and give that clarity?
Yeah, I think so. I, because I, I don't, I won't be able to vote for that. That's absurd.
No one's made, no one's made a motion, so we can just discuss.
Table that? Yeah, I.
I'm, I'm comfortable with those, those numbers for the, the meeting like that, so maybe they can give us an explanation if we go, oh, I get it, but right now I'm far from it. I get it.
So are we, are we specifically talking about the virtual meetings and the costs associated with virtual meetings? And the eighteen hundred?
Yeah, I mean, what's eighteen hundred dollars now?
Compared to the in-person meeting.
Versus nine hundred dollars now.
It doesn't, on the face of it, it doesn't make sense. You would almost think it would be less.
Well, I would think it would be less. You're sitting there in your underwear on the vertical meeting. You have to get into a car and drive for miles.
That's the conundrum here that I, I mean, I just, I don't get it.
It's probably an explanation, but we don't get it.
I know it's a smaller component of a big number here for these engineering services, but still, you know, I.
Won't, it won't hurt them to know that, Michelle, not through the fine toothed gum.
Okay, well.
I got a quick question.
Moving right along.
I got a quick question.
The next new business, I got the redundant new business.
Well, I got a quick question here. Do, do you guys have to have a, an hourly rate for those numbers?
Yeah.
Just man-hour rate? Have you tried to back into that number and seeing what, where that comes from?
Well, you know, you can back into it, but I'm still a fixed number of that.
No, I, I agree.
But they did give us a rate schedule for the various, uh, you know, levels of the professionals, senior engineer, private engineer, that sort of thing. So that is built into the spec with the proposal.
So you should just be able to ask for the rate schedule and then.
Yeah.
Or apply with the rate schedule.
Well, there's a rate schedule on the back of the, uh, the hash. It just depends on what's level of science is going to be.
Yeah.
All right, um, and B is to consider stormwater, uh, O and M agreement for eleven oh one Sullivan Circle, eight oh eight Cockwood Drive and two oh six Gillock, um, Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board authorize the chairman to sign the stormwater management operation maintenance agreements for stated hydrations.
Thanks, Michelle. Any public comment? All those in favor, aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries five, nothing. Business item, consider in-house agreement for two twenty-five Cheshire Circle.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board authorize the chairman to sign the in-house agreement for two twenty-five.
Second motion.
Cheshire Circle.
No comments?
No.
Other comments?
Falls the ingredients in order.
Great. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no. Motion carries five, nothing. Next, we need to consider replacement of bee hives in the open space across Bellingham. I may be somebody here that has, uh, you know, interest in that, so. Jason, you want to address the, uh?
Sure.
And thanks for being here because I know you got a long commute back to.
I'm just gonna sleep under my desk.
You know, it's right, a big turn of the day.
All right, all right, all right. This is on YouTube Live. Aw, come on. Bee hive. All right, so under consideration tonight is Bellingham, um, senior living located, you know, um, on East Boot Road, maybe half mile from here, approached Parks and Recreation about, um, an interest in beekeeping. They wanted to have hives put in. They said, well, you know, our park area doesn't fit for our park area, but the open space across East Boot Road, I think that'd be a great spot for it. Let's, you know, they said. Um, but thought a little bit about it. They said, well, you know, we don't have the Swedish Better Expert. We don't have a beekeeper who could be potentially partner with. We, of course, have a longstanding relationship with Carmen Beats Honey as a former farmer's market vendor. And so I said, well, let me talk to Carmen Beats Honey and see if, if they would be interested and maybe we can form a really unique public-private partnership to kind of see if we can make this happen. We had a meeting, uh, about two months or so ago, um, great meeting with Bellingham representative, Carmen Beats Honey, Carmen, obviously, myself and my intern Evan over there, and, uh. Don't get stung. Uh, and we, we hammered out a deal of how all the different entities can benefit from this project, um, in symbiotic relationship. So essentially, Bellingham will fund the installation of four hives for Carmen Beats Honey on location. Um, you do have a map in your packet of, of the actual location, approximately thirty feet, twenty, thirty feet off of, um, the parking lot area, which is a secondary parking lot area directly across from Bellingham. Um, and Bellingham's intention is that they can offer, uh, beekeeping, environmental education classes for the residents, which is very cool. And they also get two to three hundred pounds of local, not, not, uh, pasteurized honey from right across from where they all live. That they can put into their honey recipes, their cooking. That they can put into their honey recipes, their cooking, they can have culinary classes, they can, of course, jar and give it out to residents, et cetera.
Yeah. I like the idea that Carmen has to keep the, keep going. She, Carmen's going to be.
He is going to be thrown. Well, and so that's, that's a piece of it is.
Do we have programs with elementary school kids? I was just thinking it'd be kind of cool if that would.
That is one of the next steps is, I, of course, work pretty closely with Mr. Brown over there.
Okay.
And I would be a hundred percent sure that he would want to partner some capacity.
Palks, University Scholars actually have a same-please program as well.
Very cool. So, question?
Sweet deal.
Anybody got a sweet deal?
Sweet deal. So that's the first part, that we would form a, we would send a contract with Carmen Bees Honey, using Demi for the township. At any point, we could dissolve the relationship if we needed to, if he was not behaving. But we signed it up to educate folks that this is a bee zone, so people can, you know, know appropriately to stay away. So we can start that, you know, if it passed the motion today. The solicitor would draft the contract, which is done for West Whiteland and Wevo Police, and if you have locations to sell.
Are you going to get a first question?
A sticker? I'll get a sticker maybe.
Jason, now, one of the questions I do have here, did I read this review in this, this report that there's a real cost to the township of twenty-eight hundred and sixty-five dollars to do this out of the township?
No cost to the township.
I misunderstood.
That's basically, so the second half, or the second motion I propose is there's a local, there's a grant program.
Grant.
Giant corporate headquarters, where they fund environmental programs if you live within, approximately, we have two, a couple miles. So that's where the township piece would come in, where we could fund an environmental education piece for our residents, which would be adult outfit, adolescents, you know, tween, twelve to fifteen-year-old kid, and then also for younger children, to include a display hive, so that we could then have small classes of four, five, six kids at a time, full safety uniforms, they can get appropriately close to the bees, learn about the process. And we can do it obviously with East and Palks and have an adult class too.
But you referenced the supplying a local, local match. Is that the local match is twenty-eight sixty-five from the township? Is that what you're referring to?
No, the twenty-eight sixty-five is the grant that we would ask for. They don't require a match, they prefer one of course.
Sure.
But I think the minimum that we can ask for is twenty-five hundred. So if we go up to say five or six, they're going to probably tell us, no thanks. But if we stay at that number, I think twenty-five to three hundred, two thousand. Right. I think that with the public-private partnership, I think we stand a good chance of getting that grant.
I have one question about the, one of the provisions, it says here, I'm writing that paragraph, local match therefore. I don't know, it's not, it's. References here, yes, it's under the formal relationship point six, specified in the contract. The township can dissolve the relationship and ask that the hives be removed except between the specific months of April to July, removed in late August, it's parenthesized. The contract will be evaluated on a annual basis. My question is, if we had an issue with the hives becoming Africanized, why can't we remove them during that period? They dormin' or something during that period?
May I, may I approve, Your Honor?
You know, I'm a little ignorant on it, but I've been stunned by African bees, so.
Well, that's because you got too close to them.
I wasn't too close, I wasn't that close.
An Africanized hive, they tried to kiss. That's not the intent. The intent is that if it's an Africanized hive, I'm going to move it.
Yeah, I knew that.
We're going to requeen it. Even if I requeen it, I've got twenty weeks of brood of babies that want to be Africanized.
Oh, okay.
Because the queen is African. The hive would be moved. Now, if, if you don't like the look of my hive, if I, if I flub my nose at you or something like that, and you say, or if the partnership doesn't work, Bellingham backs out for some reason, then you can say, we want you to remove the hives. I just can't move them during the nectar flow.
That art, that's.
Once the hives are set right now, they're bringing, this is, this is Christmas time for three hundred days of work for me. You don't want to move them because you disrupt the entire area where they're getting flow from, and you can possibly shut the hive down.
I understand, I knew there was probably an explanation.
If there is a danger, Africanized, if I, if, out of here, and I bring another hive in.
Yeah. All right, good, thanks, Marty.
So we have, do we have two motions, Jason? So the first motion is to approve the partnership agreement, the other draft that we all reviewed.
I don't think we're allowed to say Africanized.
Understand.
I don't know what else to call them.
What do you call them? They're called African bees?
Oh. It wasn't meant as a racial slur.
Oh, my gosh. It was like the sensitivity of words killing me.
So I don't see the motion regarding the.
Yeah, we have.
I actually, I made into one motion of two parts. The first part is approving the partnership, second part of the motion approving the grant.
I'll make a motion to accept the motion, it's drafted there.
I have it here if you want it. I recommend placing bee hives in the open space across from Bellingham. With the above partner relationship noted and applying for a healing plan in the amount of twenty-eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Mike seconded that, I think.
I'm in the process, I've got a cram.
Mike second. Any public comment? Any further comment from the board? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no.
I studied for three days for questions tonight. And alls I talked about was different culture of bees.
I would propose a special meeting where Carmen can come and go through things.
Did you hear that Michael tried to get too close to my, my one aggressive hive, she's no, and they attacked him.
And the residents were there to see me doing the dance. It's like me and my dog.
We're, the final thing on our agenda before public comment is to consider the proclamation that I announced at the beginning of the meeting, to declare Wednesday, actually, we're going to declare Wednesday, June sixteenth, tomorrow, two thousand and twenty-one, Rick Smith Day in this partnership.
All right, I make a motion to reclaim Wednesday, June sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, Rick Smith Day.
I'll second that motion. I want to do that. Rick, you have any comments?
Thank you.
There you go. That's the Rick Smith window.
I remember Rick, when I first got on the board, I wrote him like a six paragraph email. And his response back to me was, no.
Congratulations.
Do you know, for twenty-four years, he kept me out of trouble. You know how much, how much that Ray has air, keeping me out of trouble for twenty-four years?
There you go.
Yeah, I would love to get at least one of those stairs or a whole more. All happy.
I don't want you to know. It's like, it's like. It's okay.
Yeah.
It's like.
I can't stand it.
Come on.
I'll scoot you over. I'll go right to you.
I'm still glad to be joking. Right here.
How much can you get in? I can get in, I can get fly to fly.
Oh, that's good.
I mean, it was like.
That's great.
All right.
All right.
There we go.
Go, 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 go. Up, down, up. Boy, that's a pretty ugly picture.
There you go.
I ended the tables a little late over there.
All right. Oh, you got that good?
Move out my bicycle a little bit.
Oh, of course. Yeah, I moved your turn.
Well, wait a second. We have to.
We didn't get enough.
Next, there is public comment. Are there any other comments from the public?
One thing from Michael, that change in the fire company stats was done by our executive director, so he must have been. He must have been keying in when we were talking. Grant everhart.
Grant, and we saw Grant recently, and I know I commented to him, so, yeah, that.
Grant, Grant did. Grant took care of it.
Good.
Mike was going to be quiet tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael, I like you, and I was getting ready to tell you to sit down and be quiet. And I like you.
My heart just said anything tonight. I had some money.
Is that your car with the flat tires?
That's okay, it's on township property, they will take care of it.
I want to, I don't have any video time on the board tonight, at what point did I lose control of this meeting? I'd like to recognize correspondence.
Come on, hold on.
There's a letter from Carol Ruthley thanking the township for having a wonderful boy, Vinnie, who voluntarily stopped over and rescued her when she had a flat tire, a tail. It was a dam. And we're a full-service township, so we appreciate Vinnie taking that initiative and helping out Carol. She was nice to her, right? So nice to her.
It went behind you. I called triple I.
Now I could, yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn and enjoy maybe a celebratory piece of cake for it.
Yeah, who's the cake?
I second the motion.
All those in favor, aye.
I see you. Thank you.
Jason, see you.
Worked at the same time.